Two, and we will go ahead and get started. This is a work session of the Board of County Commissioners. Today on our agenda, we have just two topics. Today, we'd like to talk about or talk through an update from our Public Health Department on the current COVID pandemic. And we would also like to talk through our CARES Act funding distribution with City Council. And I see that we have some members of City Council and the mayor on with us today. So we will go ahead and get started. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen and Dr. Lisa's word lingerer to give us our update on the public health crisis.
All right. Thank you so much, guys. I appreciate being here and kind of giving you an update. I'll let Lisa kind of walk through your medical, our update on cases and the data that she has. But the thing that had changed this week was we did update our public health order. As of the end of last week, the governor has done an amendment, I believe, number seven to his public health order. And the big pieces that have changed as far as what can now be opened. And I'm just going to look to my laptop where I have it up are the fact that we were able to open, you know, some of our local bars, as well as having the ability now to have some indoor events and outdoor events. Everything's based on occupancy. Most of it's trying not to exceed that 50-person limit. When we think about some of our spaces, that's not too difficult to imagine. When you think about the parameters of social distancing of six feet apart, wearing a face covering, and what that might look like. The other pieces are the fact that now here in Lake County, we are, we did put a mandate in to require people to wear face coverings in public. We find that that's one of the most effective ways to decrease the spread. A lot of what we're seeing is cases that people are interacting in groups and not practicing social distancing, either staying six feet, wearing a face covering. So we thought it was important while folks are in public and to make sure that it's happening so that, once again, folks understand how to interact with our community, as well as how we interact with each other. The other pieces are that we did receive our variants as of last week. And while a lot of the things that we asked for were covered in the new amended public health order, obviously, we asked for this variants almost, well, over three weeks ago with this week. And it did allow for our social clubs like the Elks and the Eagles to open, as well as some of our educational institutes, institutions like HMI, be able to run their summer programming successfully. So that is where we're at. I am curious to hear where the CARES funding is, as far as what's happening at the county and the city level, as more funding starts to come down from the state and try and figure out how we's public health align with some of the funding that's coming in from, you know, other sources to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and or, well, basically not duplicating efforts and paying for the same thing. We're trying to get at least the same results is where we're at. So it looks like there's a question in the chat. This is covering, oh, sorry, I just lost it. Give me one second. It looks like, um, just these coverage in public include outside. It does. So when you're out and about, you know, interacting with folks, then yes, we are asking that a face covering's on. Obviously, if you're out on the trail and it's just yourself, obviously, have a face covering in case there is an interaction that you don't anticipate. But obviously, if it's something that you're not able to do, or you're doing something independently, that's not necessarily the case. We're finding that there are a lot of folks just walking around and interacting with people in public in like on our main street without a face covering. We thought it was really important to push that message as, once again, we do not have a vaccine or effective treatment. And we know that a face covering, as well as that social distancing piece, the strong prevention measures that we currently have to decrease the spread or at least slow the spread of COVID-19. Thanks, Lisa?
Yes, ma'am. If I can have permission to share my screen. All right. So this is our update for this week. Colorado has now, for the first time in months, seen an increase in cases. So if you look, you know, at where we were at our peak here in April, we had this lovely downtrend until this week, where now we see an increase again in cases. Obviously, expected, as you know, we've talked about when people move about, that certainly does happen. But we are seeing a significant increase in cases from previous. This graph shows the cumulative case rate. And again, we've all seen this, the curve is no longer flat. It is now increasing exponentially. Looking at Lake County from a comparison, this is rates per 100,000 people. And it's a little confusing because obviously, we don't have 100,000 people in Lake County, but it is a way to compare apples to apples. So when you look at if we were to have 100,000 people in Lake County, based upon our current levels, we would have this number, 618 per 100,000 people. And if you look at our neighbors, Chaffey County to the south, Pittkin to the west, Park to the east, we are higher than they are. And, you know, obviously Eagle County and Summit County are higher than we are. But what this tells us, Commissioner Mudge had asked last week, how do we compare to our neighbors? And so this is how we compare to our neighbors, that we are higher than some, lower than others, but still very much in the throes of COVID and experiencing an increase in infections this week. Hospitalizations in Colorado, with the increase in cases, there has been an uptick here at the end, as you can see at the end of last week, in hospitalized patients. And so, you know, unfortunately, people get sick, some of them need to be hospitalized. So those two numbers often change in concert. The overall hospital burden, however, for Colorado is very low compared to what, you know, our capacity is. And so although more people are getting COVID, more people are getting sick, more people need to be hospitalized, we are still well within the safety measures for not overwhelming the healthcare system. Along with increasing cases is increasing death rates. There was a small uptick again at the end of last week. As you know, people who become infected usually get sick and die with COVID after day 10 before day 15. So it's always delayed about, you know, week and a half, two weeks. And so we suspect that this number will become higher as time goes on with our increasing cases. Lake County has followed suit with Colorado. And so you can see that we have our uptrending number of cases as well. And interestingly enough, in the past week here, we have seen more cases than we have in the previous month. So with people moving about, there are, you know, significant increases in infection. And I can't say it enough that the cases that we have seen have been clusters. And so people hanging out with one another. And if all of those people had a mask on, we would not be having this. And so I have sent to Commissioner Marcela the article from The Lancet, which is, you know, written in, you know, medical terms, so it's a little hard to understand, but clear evidence that wearing a face covering prevents infection with the virus responsible for causing COVID-19. And I will say that again, that wearing a face covering will clearly help prevent people from getting the coronavirus and COVID-19. I say that many times, and I will continue to say it over and over again, because if everyone would just cover their face, we would not have the problems that we're having now. We would not be in the position where we are now as a nation or as a world. And so cover your face, because that's what makes the difference. Here are cumulative cases, and you can see now a significant increase. We had this lovely flattening of our curve at the beginning of the summer. But now, again, as people are moving about, congregating in groups and not covering their face, we have an enormous increase in local cases. Hospitalizations, as I alluded to before, we are doing great at our medical capacity. So when you do get sick with your COVID infection, we have enough capacity to take care of you, both here at our local hospital at St. Vincent's, as well as within the state. No deaths reported, which is great. And I hope that we continue to be able to keep that trend. All right. That's the presentation for the week. Any questions for me? Does anybody out there want me to say again how important it is to cover your face?
So Lisa, it does look like there's a question. Will there be signage outside explaining the face covering mandate outside too?
Yeah. And so let's, let's just talk about the biology of the virus, because I think that makes it a little easier to understand. So this virus is spread from one person to the next. And although there has been some, you know, discussion about surfaces and, you know, what if someone sneezes on a surface and then I touch the surface? Really, the vast majority of transmissions happen from person to person. And so if you are in a box with a person and you have no face covering on, that person is sick, you will get sick. If you are outside where there is a lot of air exchange and you are walking on a hiking trail and you pass someone briefly on the same trail, the chance of infection is very, very small. So the biology of the virus is that you have to be in close proximity, so within six feet. You have to spend a period of time with that person. And most people think that's somewhere between 15 and 30 minutes. And then you have to be exposed to the droplets that that other person is making with speaking, breathing, coughing, sneezing. And so if you are outside with someone and you are more than six feet, or you're just beside them briefly, walking on a hiking trail, then it is very unlikely that you will be exposed and infected with the virus. If, however, you are with someone outside, so you're taking a walk with someone and you are within six feet and you're that your walk lasts for longer than 15 minutes, you are at high risk and you should cover your face. If you are in a large group of people and you can maintain six feet of difference, so you are outside at, you're kayaking, for example, and you're on the river and you're more than six feet from your neighbors, then no, you don't have to cover your face. If you are in a celebration outside and you have a bunch of people who are around you and you are within six feet, you have to cover your face. So it really, the rules are always the same, and it doesn't really change. Put your mask on.
Thanks, Lisa. And then tomorrow night, we will be doing a town hall for the community to see if they have any questions around kind of that new mandate that we put in, as well as what the new public health order reflects. It does move us into that blue square face that we've talked in the past. And so we are slowly, responsibly reopening, if you will. But to that point, as, you know, depending on the increase in cases, we don't know that we can keep moving past that point at this point in time. That make sense?
Thank you, Colleen and Lisa. Does anybody have any questions for Colleen and Lisa before we move past this agenda topic? Commissioner Mudge, Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything?
I don't have any other questions. I just also, I think, Lisa, you know, what I try to tell people is, I mean, you were saying protect yourself, but it's just being considerate of others and covering your face from others. So as much as you are sending the message to protect yourself, I think that the opposite is true. And I think you're saying that, but, you know, it does, it does, it does help to explicitly kind of lay out both, both sides.
Well, it's a very, it's a very good point, because, you know, we hear all the time that, well, I'm young, I'm healthy, why do I care if I get COVID? Well, you know, who cares is your grandmother, you know, and the elderly and the sensitive around you, because you may weather your infection just fine, but others will not. And if you can prevent yourself from becoming infected by making sure that everybody wears a mask and you're protecting grandma too, and that's, that's who we care about. You know, yes, you're right, you're younger, healthy, you'll probably be just fine. But there are so many others we care about who will not be fine, that it is really just a tragedy when people don't care enough about our community to protect themselves and others, right?
Yeah, and I can appreciate that, Sarah. That's definitely part of the messaging that we continue to put out, recognizing that exact fact that you're talking about. We are also adding information to our business resource file that has new information that, you know, either A, we can print out and hand out to businesses, but we can kind of share more of that on Thursday at the recovery meeting. But we do have a resource going in there with some new updated, you know, kind of language, if you will, around that face covering piece.
Thanks. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any, any questions for Colleen or Dr. Lisa?
No, I don't.
Awesome. So I just want to share really quickly. I was on the CCI Mountain District's meeting yesterday. A recurring theme within the Mountain District and several counties within the state of Colorado is that their public health directors have walked off the job because of the COVID pandemic. And so it's, it's a trend that we're seeing, not necessarily because the pandemic has been too hard to navigate, because of the treatment of public health staff within, within the state and nationally, as they try to navigate the pandemic. And so part of the documentation that they had, had talked about yesterday in the Mountain District meeting was a statement that's been released from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, NACO, which represents nearly 3,000 local health departments. And they've, they've sent this statement out to us, and I just would like to, to read through it really quickly, so that everybody knows that it's kind of out there. The title of it is "Compromising the Role of Public Health Officials Makes Our Nation Less Safe." In the midst of a worldwide pandemic, public health is under attack, and that should scare all of us. Across the country, in red states and blue states, large metropolitan areas and rural communities, public health department officials and their staff have been physically threatened and politically scapegoated. Too many have lost their jobs for trying to protect and defend the health of their community in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Many others have stepped down, interrupting their careers to protect themselves and their loved ones from actual or perceived threats. We are losing expertise, experience, and most importantly, leadership at a time when we need it the most. Beyond the threats to individual public health department leaders and staff, the vital network of public health departments is also being challenged. Some of it is subtle. At the federal, state, and local health levels, new task forces have been created to guide COVID-19 decision-making, which lack the critical input of public health systems and ignore that this virus has been and continues to be the most difficult and costly public health challenge of our lifetime. In other places, it is more overt. Public health departments are facing lawsuits over their authority to close businesses, schools, places of worship in order to protect the community at large. The very action that is credited with saving hundreds of thousands of American lives from the virus. Some state legislatures are looking to limit public health's authority to act to keep us safe when the virus spikes, which will inevitably lead to additional blame on the public health system that was made virtually powerless. Even something as simple as guidance to wear a cloth mask has been weaponized, permitting the virus to go unchecked as a political pawn. As a result, when communities look to public health to protect them, health departments will be hamstrung. When disease rates increase, public health will be invariably get the blame. Local health department staff have worked around the clock on the coronavirus response since well before the first case was diagnosed here in the United States, fighting to slow the spread of the virus while implementing strategies to help us reopen our communities safely. Health departments have led despite testing challenges, severe shortages of personal protective equipment, and decades-long insufficient budgets and staffing capacity. They have done so while navigating the same personal challenges faced by others in their community, such as childcare issues or economic impact of laid-off family members. These individuals led up the front lines of the front lines for this response and will continue even with no end in, end to the pandemic in sight. They need our support. The experts who comprise our public health departments are true heroes. We should be thanking them for their tireless work and heeding their advice, not threatening their safety or their careers. The National Association of County and City Health Officials and Big Cities Health Coalition on behalf of the nation's nearly 3,000 local health departments and 30 of the nation's largest metropolitan health departments respectfully call on all Americans, including elected officials at all levels, to do just that. It is not hyperbole to say that our lives and our livelihoods depend on it. So I just wanted to touch on that a little bit, because I think it's really important to understand that this isn't, isn't something that we're just facing locally as kind of a little bit of headbutting about reopening and pulling the Band-Aid off and letting things happen. It's something that's happening everywhere. And so I would encourage us as an organization and a community and elected officials, both city and county, to support our public health department and our medical director and medical officials in our community, that they are truly just doing their job. This is what they're here for. And, and it's really disheartening to hear those horror stories from other counties where they have just been left high and dry with no public health officials, because the, the political and the real threats are out there and they're happening, and they shouldn't be. And so just wanted to take a minute to, to let that sink in so that, you know, we're, we're all supporting them, we're all getting through this. We might not all be in the same ships, but we're all in the same storm. So let's continue to support them a little bit. And I can pass that on if you'd like to see it.
I'd just like to say thank you, Kayla. That's, um, that's really kind of, no, I'd seen that, so thanks.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Colleen and Dr. Lisa, for being here today and sharing that information. And we'll move on to our second piece of our conversation, which is to talk through the CARES. So we have City Council here today and the mayor and administration from the city. So I'll just give a little bit of background here. The county has been awarded $697,000 of CARE Act funding. The CARE Act funding is given to us through the federal money that has gone to the state, and now it's being funneled down into counties and municipalities. There's been a separate pool allocated to special districts. So the, the money that the county is, is eligible for needs to be split between the city and the county. So municipalities and cities need to work through a collaborative agreement to allocate that funding. And so we're just here to talk through what that looks like for us collaboratively as a city and a county and determine how to, to make that collaborative agreement come to fruition and start to draw down that money. So I, I think at this point, I'll just ask the mayor and Sarah and anybody from City Council if they have had any time to think about that and what their thoughts would be on the allocation of that funding.
Thank you, Kayla. One of the things we had talked about was setting aside, we have till December, the end of December to spend this, is setting some aside for the, what I think of as the unknown coming into this next fall. As a virus, you know, this thing may, doesn't seem to be going away anyway. But normally, we would expect a virus to become more active as the colder weather approaches from the middle of October through the end of the year. And so that's just one thought is, is I think we need a holdback to some extent so that we can help our, our community, our businesses if they need it later in the year. They certainly need it now, don't get me wrong, but that's just one thought.
Thanks, Mayor. Anybody from City Council have any additional thoughts on that?
Hey, Kayla, this Tracy Loretson. I honestly think that the city is in pretty good shape right now. We are actually still above our budget through May and sales tax. We have a very good reserve. We've already handed out $200,000. And I believe that CARES Act is meant to reimburse and not store money. I think that Sarah Dallas had a good point in getting reimbursed for some of the technical equipment and Zoom subscriptions required for the shutdown and so on. But as far as just taking money and putting it in the bank, I would be opposed to that. And I think that the county can come up with some other ideas for how to spend that money that would help everybody in the county, including the city. So that's kind of where I stand on that.
Thanks, Tracy. I think that's kind of my thought as well. I think on the county side, we have an opportunity to have some reimbursement from FEMA for some of the things that we've purchased in response to the pandemic. And so I was kind of thinking, I, I know that we have until December 31st to draw this money down. And so I was thinking, you know, out of that, that pool, I agree with Greg. I think we've heard from the business community that there's definitely a need out there going into those winter months, October, November, December, to help some of our business community make it through those months without the race series and the influx of tourism that we normally expect to see. And so I would be, I would be favorable to earmarking money for some of that. I think, and I don't know if this is an eligible expense, but I had thought about resources for the school district for distance learning. I don't know if they would need anything for distance learning going into the fall, if that's a possibility, with having a hybrid model, if that means, you know, allocating some money to them to ensure that students have Chromebooks if they need them. I, I guess that's kind of my thought. I've, I've seen how other communities have done it and how they have allocated their money so that the city and the county each take a portion of the CARES funding. Some counties have opted to have the county share be larger than just the population of the city and unincorporated county because of the initial response being led by the county's public health department. So there's kind of some different models for us to look at out there. Commissioner Mudge, Commissioner Glenn, what are, what are your thoughts?
I wondered, Kayla, do you know how much, how big that separate pool is allocated to the special districts for Lake County?
I do not. I just know that they had put, so of the, of the money that had come through the state from the federal government, the, the big five had gotten their allocation because of their population. And then they allocated $275 million to counties and then $27 million to special districts. And I don't know what that allocation looks like.
Yeah. Can I say something? I'm a little concerned with the city and our FEMA funding, you know, with tracking and we, you know, we're down staff and we're trying to get back onto speed with that. But really, it's 75% of only overtime hours. And so a lot of that seems pretty fastidious and bureaucratic compared to what we may even be eligible for. And then when I've spoken with Kaylee, she's kind of indicated that they will try on some of the equipment, but is unsure, you know, exactly how that will work through FEMA. So I, I do want to say, like, in the police department, for instance, we've spent $21,493 on new laptops for all of the police officers to have. We had to get a new laptop for staff and new cell phones for staff to work remotely. Those costs, you know, with the Zoom that we're covering for both the county now, I figured it was a wash and we'd figure that out at a later date. We had to bump up to the higher tier to have more different hosts available. had to bump up to the higher tier to have more different hosts available. So it's right now $250 a month that the city's being billed. You know, those are pretty concrete costs that weren't part of our budget. I do want to reiterate what Councilwoman Lorenzen said and the mayor. We have currently been seeing that the sales tax is at a good level, but really it's going to be the next several months that that's really going to come into full kind of view of how hard hit we are. I also think the business recovery group and kind of what information they get from businesses is going to be interesting and what we see happen through the summer. So I don't know, maybe we aren't quite there yet to know exactly what to utilize this for and keep thinking through and come up with kind of a menu list of items. I'd love for us to be creative and utilize it to the best of our ability because, you know, we do have little incremental costs that pop up. But I also think going into the fall, I'm not sure exactly how long and exactly what's going to be happening continuing with first wave, second wave of this virus, we need to be adaptable and work through creative solutions. There may even be potential need for another business relief grant or some other relief grant to citizens in another way. You know, we're seeing a lot of communities do creative things and I'd be willing to look at those options and talk through those ideas. There's like food programs that a lot of communities are doing that helps fund the local restaurants that supply the food and their voucher systems. That would be really interesting to me. So we're supporting our businesses at the same time as feeding those in our community that need to be fed. Those are some ideas that pop on my head.
Yeah, to Sarah's point, we're talking about the need for food. And, you know, I don't know exactly where we are in terms of food access and the funding. The county has helped St. George. That could be a reimbursable expense, incidentally, the money the county spent on that. And we also have the issue of the disaster relief fund and other resources that are being used to help people with rent and utilities. And a lot of those people, it seems their jobs are not coming back as quickly as maybe we hoped they would. And so that need may go well into the future. I think that could be focused. We talked about this, but we also need to be talking about our community, the citizens of our community. If they don't, if they can't get back to work and we run out of money to help them, maybe this is a pool of money that really will be useful.
Yeah, Mayor, I agree. I think I really feel strongly, from what I'm hearing in numbers and whatnot, that our shift from that economic and business, like primary business support, I feel like we're going to see into the fall and winter, you know, the need to support unemployed community members. Because I think that businesses seem to be doing well. Obviously, people are still coming. And businesses can scale down and break even. But doing that, you know, means that we might have, you know, a continued number of people unemployed. So I feel like if we could earmark some of that and look at some of those creative ideas, not just to give a, you know, fellow council member said, not necessarily to give a handout, but a hand up and giving to community members, that could also be kind of an ancillary or add to support of the businesses. I would love to see us try to figure out those kind of creative ways that you were mentioning, Ms. Dallas. I also, I think as far as reimbursement, I think that could be totally fair. And, you know, county has probably higher payroll considerations if we were to calculate and look at, you know, so that we might not anticipate getting refunded by FEMA. I think it would be fair to, for the city to be reimbursed for a lot of those IT costs. I wonder if we can use this to get a true, you know, better mental health support for city and county employees through the response so that we can give, you know, give and maintain the best services and response through recovery. I know if we're talking about kind of saving, not saving, but as far as like the food delivery, you know, as far as maintenance or public work staff being called on to drive and pick up food, I wonder if we don't, you know, have at least one job created or create this on-call position possibly with one or two or however many people that might get reimbursed for doing a pickup and delivery so that our folks aren't called off from their tasks. And let's see, I know, I was talking to my council representatives too. And back to kind of like supporting community members individually, it seems like senior citizens, I think, will need to, you know, I know Jane Gowing and Tracy were talking about maybe doing a senior specific outreach and making sure that something is pretty robust through maybe the senior center or whatnot, just as a social kind of interaction if nothing else. But also wondering if there's, you know, ways to better connect those folks. And do we need IT lessons or equipment or whatnot to help socialization and keeping folks connected? But those are just some other thoughts too.
Janine, do you want to speak on any of those topics?
Yeah, sure, sure. So just so you all know, speaking of individual financial assistance process, we do continue to have funding available. And we have been continuing to meet as the Unmet Needs Committee. That is where all of the applications for individual financial assistance have gotten funneled to. Our staff has provided case management on that and then Full Circle has given some of their support as well. We are going to be shifting a little bit inside and we'll talk about what that will look like. But just to let you all know that Full Circle and Build a Generation, those guys were writing utilities that's being filtered, those either being structured, that needs committee and are getting some individuals in the community. And then just as fast, the city funds $10,000 foundation. And there is another for individual financial assistance, the disaster relief fund of the, so folks have done a good job of writing and getting through things with particular eye towards making sure there is funding available for people who have not qualified for unemployment or any other government benefits. I can tell you, we do system to folks from across the country. So it can be unemployment check, maybe going back a few days a week that are leaving some rent utilities, to folks who haven't qualified for any of those programs and have alternative expenses. We have a really robust process still in place. One of the things that we are proposing is that, and Colleen might be able to speak to this a little bit too, and Kaylee, is that we are giving case management available for that process because with request assistance, it's not as simple as just putting in a request. You need to go through on the application. The Unmet Needs Committee might have a qualification for COVID funding and getting documentation for those needs. So we are paying checks to landlords and checks for used carie companies and checks for car insurance and things like that, which really takes a lot of, to get that all done, a seamless process and make sure everything gets done. It really takes for, to probably a good dozen of those folks, almost full time from March 23rd until now. And we are now shifting that so that Full Circle has agreed to have a case manager position to assist with that. And will be likely utilizing some funds that public health has for COVID response to fund that position. And then we would like to propose in human services that we have a position in our wraparound team that is a case manager. We can cover part of that position with our collaborative management funds. And then we would like to ask for about 25 hours a week through the end of the year, be covered with some CARES Act funds for that case manager position, which total is around $15,000, I believe. And that way, we'll ensure that those funds that are available for individual assistance have case management to go with them and are getting distributed. And then we're also making sure that people are aware of them. Another thing that case managers are able to do is to follow up with people from month to month and ask them how it's going, ask them if they've been able to get back to work, ask them what that looks like, ask them if they were able to start receiving the unemployment, how that process has gone. And that's been really valuable. So if folks have questions on that, that's just sort of a project that we have ongoing around those particular needs.
Thanks, Janine. Can you speak to the unemployment piece of that? I think you were going a little bit in and out there.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I know. I'm having bad signal today. Sometimes folks are getting unemployment, so we're checking with them on that. We run into a lot of folks that it's just taken me a while to apply or for various reasons they've had trouble getting it. Sometimes they don't qualify. There's just a number of different reasons. So we're checking with people on that, checking to see if they're receiving it, checking to see if they've gone back to work. We've had a couple of situations where folks have gone back to work and then for one reason or another run across and stumbling blocks and being able to continue to work, whether it's injury or, you know, that employer sends them home because they think they might have symptoms. We're running across some of those kinds of situations. So people are working hard at trying to get to work, but are still needing some of that assistance. Did you have specific questions about unemployment numbers or anything related to that?
No, not necessarily. I just was trying to, Sarah had talked a little bit about some of that funding for folks that are unemployed. And I just wasn't sure what the trend was there or if we would.
We also, Chris Floyd pointed out in the chat too, that, you know, we, it's really kind of maybe wait and see because everybody gets that extra funding through the end of July. And so it seems that nobody's looking or seeking jobs maybe or taking jobs back until then. That might be something likely to anticipate. And so maybe come the end of July, we might really get that feedback from the community and see what direction we're heading.
So the crux of the conversation here today really is, the application for this is due July 3rd. We don't have to say how we're going to spend this money through December 31st, but we have to have a collaborative approach to it by July to get the application in. If we don't apply for it, we don't get it. So we just, go ahead, Sarah.
Is my understanding that we would just submit one for our, together, not each of us, right?
So I have the application process started with all of the documentation in there, aside from a collaborative agreement with the city.
So Kayla, this is Greg. Do you need a percentage? Do you need a dollar amount? Do you need, what kind of sharing agreement are they looking for?
Anything that says we agree to collaborate.
That's pretty easy. I do have a question. How well-defined is the way that these funds can be spent?
Let me pull it up. It's pretty broad. To be honest, it's basically just says, it has to be an event that has happened in response to COVID. So we could do an additional grant cycle like the city has already done in the fall, because, you know, businesses are struggling making rent because the economic environment is not the same as it normally would be because of COVID. So it just has to be a response to it.
Okay. Well, some of the things I have in mind, some specific things are, Commissioner Mudge was asking about, you know, childcare, an important need in our community and a need that sits on the very edge of extinction because of what's going on. And the other part is, could we use any of that funding for nonprofits that are in support of city and county COVID-19 goals, or not goals, but actual programs?
So you mean like, like the disaster relief fund through the community fund?
That's one possibility. You know, just supporting Build a Generation and Full Circle in terms of what they've done for this community. I just don't know, I don't know if that's even a possibility in terms of how this could be used. Maybe that's not what you're looking for right now, but it's a thought.
Yeah, I think, you know, it would just have to be, again, something that we could submit as reimbursement in response to the COVID pandemic. So let's just say if Build a Generation had to hire NOAA to be a facilitator with our Economic Recovery Group, we could, or we had to hire an Economic Recovery Manager, we could cover the six months of that salary with CARES Act funding because we typically wouldn't have to have an Economic Recovery Manager if we didn't have the COVID pandemic. The childcare stuff, I don't know for sure how we could justify that being part of the COVID pandemic. I think Bright Start is kind of a separate issue all its own. But, you know, something like Beth had brought up about like translation services or something of that manner. I think that would be completely applicable here.
Okay. In the short term, what we really need is a written agreement that the city and county are going to work together on this. Would that satisfy, you know, the need in the application?
No, I think it's to be a little more detailed.
Okay. Don't know.
I wonder if we don't say, you know, initially, we agree to reimburse city and county for direct funds, not otherwise eligible for FEMA reimbursement, or maybe the county takes that approach. And Sarah, I know you're, I don't know exactly what the concerns are with the city, but if those aren't eligible expenses, I think we can work out those details. So reimbursement, and then maybe we just say, you know, we certainly agree to collaborate on an increased recovery plan and staffing needs. And then we want to hold or reserve some funds for unanticipated, you know, community member needs. Kayla, I'm sorry, can you let us know how specific it really does need to be?
There's not any kind of, like, template or language in there.
Okay.
I think. Go ahead.
You might consider, and this is totally up to you, I don't know how other counties are doing this, to Janine, in distribution of individual financial assistance funds, we created the Unmet Needs Committee. And it's representative of our community and it is a good way, I think it's been a very key component to the success they've had in the grant writing, is that they know that there's this committee who's sort of reviewing and evaluating, making sure things meet that COVID test. And it's sort of a, it's a collaborative inclusive process. So you might even think about creating something like that that's related to the city-county government community needs, where you have a committee structure that evaluates how the funds get sent. And that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I like that, Janine, including the collaborative efforts that, yeah, evaluate the criteria. I think that would be important to include in that.
I think that's great. And we could also include the fact that we had a committee that reviewed business. that reviewed business needs in terms of a grant process. And so it's just, it's along the same lines.
Sarah Dallas, do you have any more specific questions about the FEMA reimbursement process? Or could you explain that a little bit from the city's perspective?
I mean, I think Kaylee has done a good job at trying to keep us on track. You know, when they started really tracking things, we were down staff, critical staff in the finance department. So now that we have that back, I think we're trying to get our brains wrapped around it. But honestly, what continues to be said is only 75%, no.
Yeah.
75% of overtime hours, directly COVID overtime hours, are eligible for reimbursement for FEMA. We haven't really ever, from what we can see in the initial couple of months in the pandemic, I don't think we had that many hours that we're capturing that are considered overtime COVID hours, that it makes a lot of sense for us to go through the process for reimbursement. And so I think we were kind of at the place to say we might not go after those hours. But I do want to see if we can capture the equipment costs related to setting up mobile offices, getting everyone their own computers, cell phones, et cetera. And when I talked to Kaylee about that, she was like, well, it's our, my understanding, and I wish she was here to speak to it, but essentially she said she thought it was potential that we could reimburse requests for it, but it had to be through the EOC office. And it sounded a little complicated to me that I was concerned that that might not be eligible reimbursement. So I'd like to know that because we certainly have costs associated with a lot of equipment for the fire department, costs associated with the city hall.
Did those not go through logistics and through Mabel, Sarah?
Well, we're being separated out, Janine, to try to capture our own as a city and then go after it. And it was really daunting. And so to be honest, I don't know that we, I'm not sure.
Okay. And I'm wondering if, yeah, I don't know if there's really to go back through that process to capture that.
Yeah, I just am concerned because I think, I don't want you guys to leave money on the table, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we want to leave any money on the table either. And like I say, again, it's those significant equipment costs that we're definitely needing the reimbursement for. So I can get those figures of what we've spent and turn that over to you in the next day or two with Donna. We've been capturing those.
Because I, Sarah, I think even the additional shift at the fire department would be reimbursable through FEMA. Even at 75%, that's still 75% that you would get reimbursed.
Now, that might be the only one, because it has to be COVID hours only and only overtime COVID hours. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right, but wouldn't you budget for other overtime hours normally anyway?
Not in the fire department, because they're on shift work.
So is that really the only place that you would, you would had additional expenses for COVID? Because since we pay 70% of that, we would want to get reimbursed for what we can get reimbursed for that, I would assume. And I can't speak on behalf of my other board members, but...
I guess what I'm saying, Kayla, is it had to be specific COVID duties. So they have to be doing their paid stubs or their tickets that show the work that was COVID, and only overtime hours that were COVID stuff. So even if we're doing COVID hours in our regular duties, it's not until you hit the overtime that then 75% of that's reimbursable. And so it's really hard to pull that out with the fire department in particular, when they're set out on shift work.
I think we're trying to also, though, from the county perspective, look at if you had COVID activities during the week and that pushed your staff person into overtime, that you could justify that that COVID work
Yeah, I think that's what we would do, is do that. But I don't know that in most departments, anyone
Yeah, that you had that.
And what, the ones that were doing most of the overtime are exempt employees that are not hourly employees.
But exempt employees can be reimb-
Yeah, exempt employees can be reimbursed as well through FEMA.
And we could do that. I mean, I just, I don't have the total math because we have not had the staffer capacity to really be able to track it the way that you guys have at the county. But we talked about it internally, and we just determined it was not going to be very significant. But what was going to be significant was definitely in terms of the equipment costs for FEMA specifically.
Okay, I would be willing to come help you specifically with the fire department so that we could potentially get that additional shift put into FEMA for reimbursement, since our budget would be impacted by that as well. Commissioner Mudge and Glenn, what are your thoughts on that? I don't, I mean, I can just, we can just have a conversation offline about it if that would be appropriate, Sarah.
I think it would make a lot of sense. It seems like, yeah, if there was misunderstanding or maybe issues with just capacity for tracking, I get it. But I do, Commissioner Marcel, if you can work with the fire department, that's a great point, because I think, you know, you set up those extra shifts and that should be an eligible expense. But I think that'd be great if you could do that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have a conversation with you offline about it, Sarah Dallas, if that would be okay. And Lori, I know you have your hand up.
The childcare that we touched upon in chat, Beth Hahnke is-
Hard to hear you, Lori.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, sorry. I was wondering about the childcare issue thing as well. Beth Hahnke has mentioned in chat some of what I was thinking as well. Since we are moving to phased opening and things are opening up and people are able to return back to their jobs, I know that emergency family time off has been allowed through the CARES Act through December 31st. So my concern is for those people who may be returning back to work before school resumes, and then even after-school care through the rest of the year, if any of that revenue can be allocated towards trying to help, knowing that we don't, or we are having some difficulty with the current daycare facilities in the county. Am I making sense?
Yeah, I think the issue with that potentially is, like, we would have to have a licensed childcare facility, I would assume. Janine, do you have any input on that?
I couldn't quite hear what the question was.
Allocating some of our funding towards after-school or out-of-school time programming, does that sound right, Lori? Is that what you were alluding to was, is it potentially funding a new after-school or out-of-school time program or additional childcare programming? I just don't know that we have the licensing or insurance requirements outside of what Goal has done to offer anything like that right now.
Yeah, that's the question. With the, you know, with having to be in smaller groups, it's going to require more folks. And I think we're struggling with what we currently do have, or we're being quite limited. So I'm wondering if any funds can be allocated to help us facilitate licensing or a space or any of that.
It just depends on what the priorities are. I would say if you want to try to make the case that due to COVID requirements, you have to have a different teacher ratio and you need to have more teachers, I think you could maybe make the case that CARES Act funds could be used for something like that. If you, is that sort of the question that you have in terms of reopening a childcare and increasing their capacity? I think the childcare centers, if I'm not mistaken, by the time they're able to reopen, will be able to go back to the regular teacher ratio, COVID teacher ratio. But if there is a need to get more teachers in there, to decrease ratios due to COVID requirements, that would definitely meet COVID funding criteria. Is that the question?
Yeah, and I think the school district has some additional COVID funding coming to them because they're separate from the special districts and the city-county share. So when I talked to Rena a little bit about that and Jeff Fiedler a little bit about that, they had said, you know, they had been given an allocation of CARES funding as well. They could not use it to supplement staff salaries at this point going into the school year, and they had to use it by January 31st, or December 31st, I'm sorry. But that's only half of their school year because their fiscal year starts July 1st. So they could use it for, let's say they had a math teacher and they had to hire a para to assist with lost learning time, they could hire a para to assist with lost learning time and cover that through CARES funding, but they would only be able to cover that position through December 31st with the CARES Act funding. And we would be in the same position then as well as we wouldn't be able to cover that for an entire school year. We would only be able to cover that for the first few months of the school year. Dana and Jane, do you have anything to add or any other perspectives? I'd love to hear your perspective from your roles as city council as well.
I have, I definitely have concerns about our seniors and some of the isolation that they have experienced, especially if we're thinking that, you know, there's going to be other rounds in the fall. And, you know, those are kind of the, I think, I mean, some folks are aware of these casualties, but I do consider them COVID casualties, especially if they don't have the internet access or they don't have the electronic devices. You know, I'm not sure how that could work, but maybe, you know, if we could have some kind of, maybe before the fall sets out, some kind of boot camp for our seniors to just maybe familiarize them with Zoom or FaceTime so they can still interact with their, whether it be their family that lives away or just their neighbors. So I do have concerns about our senior citizens.
Thanks, Jane.
That could be something we could check with Judy Main at the senior center and see if they have an interest in potentially getting some funding to do some technology or outreach to the folks they're working with.
That would be great, I think. Thank you.
Colleen, do you have, since you oversee the senior center, do you have any information to provide on senior services going forward? And how we can chat through what Jane has been talking about? Because I do think that's definitely a concern.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, we're in touch with all the seniors that access services through all the different senior programming pieces. We also push out a newsletter. Judy has been making, you know, phone calls to folks just to do kind of wellness checks. We've tried to push some seniors who are a little bit more savvy to the bag, the ability to have people shop for groceries and things like that. And I feel like that's gone over really well in the sense for a lot of our senior population. But obviously, we don't reach anyone, right? That's always a problem. We never fully reach a full population. So if there's anyone specifically that Jane is thinking about, you know, obviously, we'd love that information. So Judy can make that contact. I think, you know, I appreciate the brief tip idea, and I think it's just something that we have to think about. And I'll, you know, I'll reach out to Judy, see if, you know, Gabe's had interest. Because we do, like I said, we have access to a lot of our seniors to be, continue to serve our power group meals, kind of like a drive-through service kind of thing, and, you know, touch base with them. But obviously, I would think there could be more. I think, you know, folks are getting less in the shuffle who don't normally even interact in our systems, and we just don't have a handle on who those folks are.
So there's the opportunity then for us to allocate some of that funding to the senior center to reach out to that population then.
I think it depends on when you say that, in the sense of, you know, we feel connected, but there are folks that don't connect into any of our systems, whether it's through mailing a newsletter or identifying themselves, if you will. It's the folks that we don't have handle on. I feel pretty good about everyone that we do connect with and know. So that's my point of, you know, do folks have ideas? It's one thing to have someone do outreach, but if you've known who these folks are and you've no way to contact them, then, you know, maybe it's a bigger campaign of knowing your neighbor and what does that look like and whatnot. So I'd have to think about that more. But obviously, open, do you have any ideas in that respect?
Thanks, Jane. I think that was, that's really important for us to keep our pulse on as well. So I've asked Kristi Doon for a few collaborative agreements, and she will send some of those on. It looks like, you know, the county will be responsible for submitting for reimbursement through the DOLA portal. We just need to have an agreement of how we want that allocation to be broken out. Do we want to allocate it according to population between city and county?
You have to, just before you send it in?
What's that?
You have to have that allocation broken out before you send it in or as you request the funds, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so it looks like in this email from Kristi Doon, each county and municipality has come to an agreement of how to allocate those funds. But again, there's not any kind of parameter to say, you know, this is how we will ask for reimbursement of funds. Does anybody have any kind of specific recommendation on how we allocate funds?
This is Greg. I'll throw out an idea, and we can toss it around. We know that the county has borne the brunt of COVID-19 expenses, whether it's to the health department, to the emergency management, the senior center, all these things are county-centric. The city really has been kind of on the sidelines. We also know that I had proposed a sharing formula a couple of years ago that basically said, city 17%, county 83%. I don't know why we couldn't use that in this case and justify it based on the fact that all city employees are county employees as well. And the county has borne the real, again, the brunt of COVID-19 expense. So it's just, it's a thought, I'm throwing it out there.
City council, what are your thoughts on that?
This is Tracy Loretton again. I think that might work. And if it turns out that we don't need 30% of the money, is it possible for a city council to reallocate that back to specific programs in the future?
Yeah, I think that we can renegotiate that collaborative agreement through the process, depending on how- depending on how our situation and circumstances change through the response to the pandemic. I think that would be appropriate. Greg, what, can you tell me that percentage one more time?
17% is the number.
To the city?
Yes. Oh, no, 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 that was to the county. No, I forgot.
Cool, I can get that drafted. Jane and Dana, do you have anything to share on that potential initial allocation through a collaborative agreement?
I would be fine with, if we could reallocate to some of, you know, to some of those agencies, I would support that as well.
Thanks, Jane. I would anticipate having this Greg's suggestion be initially put into the collaborative agreement, and then also having these conversations more frequently as we're going through the continued response and recovery from COVID. And I would anticipate us, you know, just as an example, if we determine in the fall that we need to do another round of business grants, similar to what the city had done in the fall, potentially looking at having the city maybe administering that process, but the county, and the county reimbursing the city for that as part of our CARES funding. And we can talk through that, so that, you know, we're partnering on that program, but not reinventing the wheel at the county when we've done it once at the city type of thing. And trying to make sure that when we're talking about allocating to those programs, that we're definitely getting city councils' input on how to allocate to those programs and what programs to allocate to.
Kayla, this is Greg. I like that approach. It leaves it a little bit open-ended. It gives us some flexibility in terms of helping our community. There are a variety of ways we can do that. It's nice to have this problem of $697,000 to help our community, so I'm grateful.
Yeah, me as well. And I just, I wanted to be sure that we continue to get the ball rolling on this so that we don't miss an opportunity to apply for it.
Absolutely. No, I think that sounds like a good approach.
Kayla, I appreciate your, and I liked your phrase about partnering, because we are partners, the city and the county. We, I think we have a good partnership, and I think we, you know, we can collaborate on this. And I am, you know, I'm pleased that you guys had this work session, so we can talk about it. And I think we know that working together, we come out and leverage and come out with the best product for our community. So thank you.
Thanks, Jane. I really have to say that I'm very thankful for the participation of city council and how much we've been able to work together through the pandemic and through the past year. It's been wonderful, so thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so with that, I will get a collaborative agreement drafted and send it through legal and pass it on to the city, so that we can get this into the DOLA portal within the next week. Would that be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, great. I will get on that and get that sent over to legal for review within the next day or so, and then pass it on to city council.
Kayla, do you expect, I'm assuming that as the city will have to officially codify that or something. And so, Mayor, that might be a special meeting or something, because your next regular meeting's on the 7th of July.
Yeah, and we'll need to, yeah, we'll need to have this uploaded and into the system before July 3rd.
We might just need to call a quick meeting for council to approve that agreement sometime next week, so long as we have a quorum or something.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Glenn, do you have, do you have anything to add or any points for discussion?
I have nothing.
All right. So with that, I think, Sarah Dallas, you and I will get together to go through some of your expenses and put together a list and a packet, and we'll see what we can come up with for reimbursement. Crystal and I will work with our state contact for FEMA reimbursement and see what is or is not eligible. And then that way, we can help the city get reimbursed for some of that response cost through FEMA. And then I'll get the agreement drafted and through legal, and then sent over to city council. With that, I think we can go ahead and adjourn. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out and contact myself or my fellow commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.